I'll call the Oak Park High City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, March 14th. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the agenda. We have just two items to add under the consent agenda, which is item E, cleanup day, per our staff memo, and it'll be on May 20th. And then item F is giving direction to our city attorney regarding the opioid settlement. Are there any other changes or additions?
Move the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rock, second by Councilmember Littlegren. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next is council staff reports. I testified before the House on House File 1318. Last week, I attended the Minnesota Mayor's Association Workshop. And then on the 8th, I testified at the Senate for Senate File 898. Today was the Midwest Governors Association meeting. The 20th, I don't have a date or time, I mean, I don't have a time yet, but it's to testify at the Senate regarding the grants bill. Oh, and then I already talked to Eric about the other one. And that's all I have. Councilmember Doherty.
You know, I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Johnson.
I attended the Planning Commission meeting this month as a member of the public to listen to their public hearing.
Thank you. Councilmember Littlegren.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Rock?
Attended the CVB meeting. They're still working on their bylaw changes. We will be seeing those at some point in the future because they'll bring them back to the cities. I also went to the Middle St. Croix meeting. One thing that we did, an impact to our city in some ways, is that they did provide a $500 grant to Sunnyside Condominium Association in regards to a wild flower planting project that they've got going down there.
Well, that's nice. Thank you. Next is staff reports. Chief, Chief Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update. We did have a resignation of one of our new officers that we hired back in November. So we're hoping to move forward and get that job posting out here in the next couple of weeks to replace that position of that officer. Squad car update. We should have one of our new squads here by Thursday and our second new squad in by next week, by the end of next week. So that's good. That's moving along quite nicely. Then Friday, just a reminder, we have St. Patrick's Day, which is going to be busy. We will have an extra patrol hold it as well on that night. And maybe the snow might help us a little bit there and tamper that, but we'll see.
And Chief, I'd like to compliment you in the department for your assist with in Stillwater last week. And hopefully, our squad is okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for all you do. Next is Assistant and City Administrator Pinsky.
Mayor and Council Wynd Babcock at 5523 Oak Green Place North was chosen as the most recent recycling award winner.
Thank you. Next is visitor public comment section. This is a time for anyone to address the council on any item of concern. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is approved bills and investments, checks 69125 to 69177 in the amount of $299,969.69. Approved City Council minutes from February 28th, 2023. Approved resolution granting the application of Stillwater Area Fast Pitch Association to conduct a one-day raffle at Stillwater Area High School on May 6, 2023. Approved proclamation for April 28th, 2023 is Arbor Day and May as Arbor Month. Cleanup day per staff memo on May 20th and direction to city attorney regarding the opioid settlement.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty. Eric?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Littlegren?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. We have no public hearings tonight, and we have no old business. So we will move on to new business, which is the Swagger Park playground equipment install. Mr. Kegley.
Yes, I'll take that. Mayor, Council, I believe you folks know that we've been working for a few months now on replacing the Swagger Park equipment, the playground equipment. We did receive proposals from two local playground companies, St. Croix Rec and Flagship Recreation. Each company did provide what we asked for. They provided proposals that kind of helped maybe reduce some static shock from the overhead power lines. And those proposals, of course, in your packet, hopefully you took a look at them. The quick overview is that St. Croix Rec provided a package or proposal that was in the neighborhood of $66,000 with a June 2023 install. And Flagship Recreation proposal was $75,000 roughly with an August install. Now, at the February meeting, the Park Commission did make a recommendation to go with Flagship because they had a small preference in some transition equipment between play structures. And, you know, I think it's best if you folks just take a look at this. It's page 19 and page 37 in your packet. I just want to point out that the differences in the equipment is very, it's very minor. And so I don't know if you folks can see this, but I think there, the Park Commission's preference was in that, in these, kind of the, this little walking bridge here. One of them's rope, the other one's metal with like a plastic type wheel. Okay. So, the issue with that, in my mind, is that the equipment from Flagship is roughly $9,000 more expensive than St. Croix Recreation. And in my opinion, I don't believe that small difference is worth $9,000. And so I have no disrespect for the Park Commissioner's preferences. I think St. Croix Rec's equipment is a better value to the city. So.
And they've done quite a bit in our other parks.
They have.
And they've stood behind them.
Yeah. And I have no doubt that Flagship wouldn't stand behind theirs. And they're, they seem like a great company. It's just a matter of cost.
Sure.
And so this playground equipment would be funded by using the park and trail improvements budget. There's an estimated balance of $550,000. But recall that this budget is also used for every other project in the parks. And so $550,000 is not a lot of money. Like I said, we'd be happy to work with either playground company. But because of that price difference, my recommendation would be to award this project to St. Croix Recreation, simply because they provided a proposal that costs less. And the equipment is very similar. I'm sorry, what's that?
Plus, they can get it in at the beginning of summer and not the end of summer.
That too. That's a, that's a little added bonus. Yeah.
I just have one more question. You're still leaving the climbing wall in there, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Let me clarify. This is to replace the failing structure that we had to remove, the old wooden structure that was demolished for safety reasons. So it's an addition to the park, not replacement.
We worked hard putting that climbing wall in.
Yeah, right. That was a fun project.
Okay, well, I like the look of it. I think kids will have fun.
Yeah, both very, very similar, very similar.
Motion that we go with the St. Croix Rec.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, folks.
Get it ordered and maybe the snow will melt. Okay, next is planning commission appointments. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Planning Commission held this meeting last week and took up two items relating to potential vacancy and potentially a second vacancy in the near term. The first of the, of the two issues relates to Commissioner Tim Freeman. His term expires in May of 2023. He did offer to stay on the commission for one more year if the council would consider that one-year extension, which the city has entertained those in the past and has outlined in your bylaws to, to, to consider that. Planning Commission did recommend to you to offer that to Mr. Freeman. So that's kind of the first and easier of the two issues. The second issue that, that we are know of is that David White left the Planning Commission earlier this year, and the city did move forward with seeking applicants. And that closure date was February 24th. We received one application from Mr. Kramer, who's here tonight, as always. So that's good. And the Planning Commission considered that too. And we wanted to let them know what was going on and if they wanted to make a recommendation to you as well. They pretty much considered three actions. Do they schedule an interview with that applicant in April? Or two, there was some discussion of, since they know his tenure and, and past participation, do they simply want to make a recommendation to the council and apply to the commission? Or lastly, did they want to reopen this for another period of time, presumably 30 days, with the primary goal being get it in the city's newsletter one, at least one time? Given the timing of Mr. White's resignation, there was, you know, the next fourth newsletter is coming. And so, so that's what happened. So ultimately, the Planning Commission decided or is recommended, recommended to the council that they post this opening for one more, for a period of roughly 30 days, so it gets into the March newsletter. I don't believe the, despite my typo and my memo, the commission, I don't think had any fundamental objection to, to Mr. Kramer. I think their, their desire was to see if there can simply be any new, new engagement in that. So we do have vacancies on the, on the commission. One with David White leaving and one with Mr. Freeman, potentially being done at the end of this year unless you're willing to make an extension. So as it relates to the over, the current pure vacancy, you have an applicant in Mr. Kramer. Or does the council desire to open that back up for another 30 days or so? So.
Would you like this in two separate motions?
Whatever you prefer.
I was just, oh, moving.
I was just going to comment. We continue to struggle. And where I have, I guess, a little heartburn here with the recommendation is, we have somebody, you know, I'm full in favor of, of one-year appointment for Mr. Freeman. And I don't know that setting it out again, I mean, we're always struggling to get. And if we have somebody, you know, then, then what's to say if we do that? And then nobody does. And Mr. Kramer then no longer wants to do it. We're in a position that, so I just, I struggle with that point, that we have somebody, they follow the rules. And, yeah, it's a nice thought that it would be a great idea to have more people participate. However, more people don't ever seem to participate. So we have something in front of us. Maybe that's what we should move.
Yeah, maybe when we do these openings, and Jen puts it in the newsletter, maybe describe what the duties are a little more. Because I had several people call me about the Park Commission opening. And they didn't know what it was, what it would entail. What are the, how, you know, how many hours do you have to put in? So maybe when we do put these openings, maybe just add a little more so that it might entice them as to, it's not going, not like the city council where it's going to take a lot more of your time.
And also, I think noting that there's a per diem for childcare might be a, because I know some people have expressed issues with childcare. But I can say, having attended the Planning Commission meeting, this was a, a very, very heavily debated topic among the planning commissioners about Mr. Freeman's extension for one year and him continuing on. And obviously, having a very great candidate, but wanting new faces. I encourage everyone on the council, if you haven't had a chance to listen to that recording and hear what they were discussing, because Mr. Freeman had some comments about what his view would be if there was multiple applicants. And I don't want to speak for him, but there's the record there. Knowing that this was such a heavily debated topic and knowing that they were really, really, really struggling, knowing Mr. Kramer is a great candidate, I think we should, I am in favor of kind of going with their recommendation, as tough as it is.
But the other thing is if Tim is going to go for one year, we appoint Mr. Kramer for one year and then put things in the newsletter. Maybe just an article that says, if you've ever considered being a park commissioner or a planning commissioner, this is what you consider. When we have opens, openings, please consider joining us. Something like that.
Well, and they were in favor too of if they did this extension and posted, then it would be with our May timeline, which is when the terms expire. So that was the other thing that they were thinking of with this recommendation.
I'll, I'll make a motion. We appoint Tim to a one-year appointment and we appoint Mr. Kramer.
Did you want that in separate motions, Eric?
If I may, the only clarification that I would ask Councilmember Littlegren is, is what would be the length of Mr. Kramer's tenure?
Full term.
Typical, a full term?
Yep.
So I, if that, that would be my only question.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have other council items or announcements. Are there any? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Rock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't make 615, but is 624 okay, Chuck?
Jim will probably give you a...